I've got a twitch.
Good, okay. Good evening. I'd like to call this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting Tuesday, May 7th, 7:00 PM to order. We have an agenda this evening, obviously, and we will follow it as best we can. I'd like to call everything to order and do a rule call of members, please. Heather.
Mr. Schindler?
Present.
Mr. Reffer?
Here.
Mr. Eiffelase?
Here.
Mr. Linga Paltar?
Here.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from March 5th and then also April 2nd. So, let's do March 5th first. Any comments, criticisms, edits, and/or requests for changes? We're waiting for you, boss, because you're the one that always comes up with...
I was not here.
Oh. You lucked out. Anybody else have any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was not here as well. However, I just wanted to comment that the suggestion that was fostered at that meeting regarding progress and issues that are coming before the BZA report to us, I really liked that idea. And I see that was done in April as well, so just catching up comment since I was not here.
We missed you.
Did you?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't get a card.
No, and you won't. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you. I guess I have the second. All seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Uh, we have two ayes and two abstentions.
Two abstentions, yes.
Two abstentions, two ayes for the record for the, uh, for the minutes. Is that legit? No? Right, so I guess we'll have to push March to next month. Do we have enough people? Okay. Uh, April 2nd.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have some comments.
Oh, boy. I knew I could depend on you.
Now, this is getting picky.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. No need to apologize for perfection.
Well, you can, you can understand. Page 10 is the first one. Page 10, line number 16. We're going through, through this discussion all over the place, and we have questions all over the place in the minutes. Are there's, are they, are they still relevant? Are they still desirable? And there are new uses that aren't on the list? Question mark. Well, you don't have a question mark. I, I found a few of those. I'm a little bit embarrassed to pick that kind of chicken scratching up, but I did. So I found them in three pla, four places to where I think we ought to have a question mark instead of a period, but I don't care. Doesn't, doesn't bother me. The minutes are okay. The punctuation is not how I would like to see it, but that's only me. So whatever you want to do with it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me ask the stenographer. Do we, is that, is that something that is just inherent in the system? Or can we change when somebody asks a question? Can we end it in a punctuation with a question mark instead of a period?
Can end it with a period.
Okay. There's your answer.
And, and that was what? Could you repeat that?
You can end it with a period. I'll give you an instance when we're done with the meeting.
Okay, okay. I, I can keep those on my list. And we had, we had a ton of talk.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we did.
We had a bunch of conversations in here. And, boy. I'm, I'm, if you read the minutes, I'm just flabbergasted as to what, how we get it, how we talk and everything. I was just too involved in this much meeting minutes. I'm sorry. I was. It was, it was a long, drawn-out meeting and, but that's all right. All, all sorts of new windows in, in this, that I read into it, but that's not the way we should take it. Other than that, that's all I had. Very good job.
Mr. Eiffelase, you weren't here for that one either, were you?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, two for two.
But I'll comment if I may.
I'm sure you would.
If I may, I also appreciated the, the reporting on the numbers permits as well. I had no idea there were like 400 last year. It's more than one a day. So I appreciate that kind of update from Heather as well.
Well, we have incorporated the zoning inspector report into our agenda.
We have?
Yes. So she gets her moment in the sun and gets to shine with her expertise and knowledge and shower us with all kinds of good information. So I can tell she's already champing at the bit to jump in there and tell us what's going on.
So I appreciate the content. I may have not have read it with the scrutiny that Mr. Reffer put to it, but I did, I did get the, just so I catch up.
He sets a pretty high bar.
He does, he does.
Sets a very high bar. Now, do we have a quorum for this set of minutes?
It sounds like it.
Yeah.
So we got three?
Yeah, we have three.
Then I'll entertain a motion. If we're good to go. I mean, unless you, there's any corrections you're going to require. Okay, no requ, just the punctuation issue.
Yeah, just punctuation.
And the verbiosity of the last meeting.
And I'll, I'll talk to you after that, after the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Some of it's yours, right?
Oh, I'm sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the minutes, the, uh, the March minutes?
Uh, April.
April minutes as written.
Thank you. I'll entertain a second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Let the record reflect that we have three ayes and a one abstention. Uh, three ayes, one abstention to accept the minutes as submitted for April 2nd, 2024. Okay. Moving on. Uh, correspondence report from the zoning commission. Frank, anything to discuss?
Uh, none, Mr. Chairman, at this time.
Okay. Mr. Reffer?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Eiffelase?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing? Um, I have not really had much of anything other than that ongoing conversation with the resident with the, uh, the pool cover fence issue. Other than that, that's been pretty much it, so.
Pool cover fence issue.
Right. Um, so that, that covers our correspondence. Now, Heather, this is it. You're up. The zoning inspector report.
Well, thank you for allowing me to give you guys a quick update on some things that you might find of interest. I appreciate that. Um, I know at the last, um, meeting there was a question, well, well, two months ago I mentioned the, uh, study that the, the JED was doing regarding the Quail Hollow Hotel and reuses of that property. We do not have the final report yet, but that should be coming to the JED, um, within the next week or so. And then at some point, they're going to schedule some kind of presentation to the trustees. I had suggested that we try to get the zoning boards there too, particularly this board if possible. So if I hear an update as to when that is, or if the report is made available at that time, I'd be happy to share that with you guys, because that could require, necessitate some, you know, zoning changes. Also, a quick update on the, the BZA. At our last BZA meeting, there was a conditional use permit approved for another commercial property that's part of the Quail Hollow PUD. That's at the Cryle and Hunting Lake Drive, right in front of the water tower there. The, the board approved their use to do a commercial center there, which includes potentially two buildings with a mix of the office, retail, restaurant uses. If you recall, last year, Ralph Victor Construction, Todd Victor came to you and showed you an informal, like a concept plan of that, of what that project might be. So at some point, he'll be back in front of you guys for a site plan review.
Okay. We had issues with that, though, didn't we?
We did.
Turnaround and usage and...
We did.
Fire access.
There were some concerns related initially from the board at that time, when he came to you.
I saw Mr. Victor today at the Board of Revisions, so we had hearings today, and he was one of my, one of my hearings today, so.
Oh.
We chatted briefly about that. Right, yes, it is.
Also, tomorrow night, the BZA is meeting, and they have a pretty lengthy agenda. There's a few things on there that, um, could make their way to you, including, depending on the outcome of a couple of applications, there's a Taco Bell is looking to locate on Cryle Road, um, between the Waffle House and the Key Bank.
Wow.
So they have a couple of applications that they have to get approved first by the BZA, and depending on the outcome of that, you know, the next step would be with you guys for the site plan review as well. And then I just wanted to mention, in case you guys ever get calls or questions, but the, um, Quail Hollow Ivy Ridge Development, which is off of Girdle Road, off of Orchard, North Orchard, it backs up to the golf course. Um, that was that 30-acre site that's part of the Quail Hollow PUD. The construction of the homes have, have started recently. Pulte is one of the builders back there, and then also Ralph Victor Construction. So there's some homes under construction back there, just to let you guys know that that has kind of started.
So that, part of that Ivy, what is it? The Ivy?
Ivy Ridge.
The Ivy Ridge.
Yes. Yeah. There's a private street that connects up to North Orchard and then goes, wraps around to Girdle, or at least on the north side. And then I'm sure you've seen on Cryle Road, the construction of the car wash and the ice cream parlor, that's, that's well underway. I don't have a good idea of when those are going to open. I think the owner of the ice cream store was August, September. I'm not sure about the timing of the car wash, so. That's really all I have for you tonight.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Uh, we do have some public here today, so I don't know if anybody came here with a specific goal in mind, but if you are here to have a conversation with us about anything in particular, uh, you can come up and speak. If you, and if you are going to speak, all I do is ask that you give us your full name and your address, uh, so we know who you are and what, what you're going to talk about.
Okay. My name is George Christopher Meldrum. Call me Chris. Uh, I'm a resident Concord. I live on Proudie Road. Uh, my wife and I have lived there for, right, 10 years now. 111-59 Proudie Road. What I'd like to talk to you about is, uh, I titled it Proudie Road, the present and the future.
Okay.
And to sort of help, hopefully, help everybody through this.
Great. We appreciate handouts. That's always helpful.
Unfortunately, I only have one minute, secret page.
Okay.
Slides are doubled.
Doesn't bother me.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll put that.
Like I say, I live, uh, I live down on 111-59 Proudie Road. I'm right next door to a, uh, a large building, a large new building, uh, that may be, I would say, maybe a monstrosity or what looks like a warehouse or a building, but that is a, uh, a normal, I guess, A1 residence, uh, that was approved about a year, about two years ago, I think. And at the time, um, at the time, uh, they wanted to, there was an existing house there that's been there for 50 years. You'll see that in the picture on the second page. On the left-hand side, that's the, the picture of the, of the existing building with an extension to the house, then a garage, then a much larger garage. On the backside, the picture on the right, on the second page, is, uh, the backside of that. On the, on the west side, you can't really see that very well from Proudie Road, but if you see on the far right-hand side of that second picture, um, that's my neighbor's house, and he has to look right out his, um, back porch, uh, at those garage doors and everything. They were all, that was all part of a residential expansion that was made two years ago. And the reason I am here is because, uh, all of my neighbors are really upset about this. But I found out they haven't been upset enough to come here to talk to you, so.
So you drew the short straw?
Pardon?
I said, so you drew the short straw?
I didn't, I sort of volunteered for it.
Okay.
I volunteered for it. I just felt that it, the record should show that the neighborhood is not happy with it, first of all. Secondly, uh, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it. It's, I don't know, maybe in the past, you know, the horse is out of the barn, kind of thing. But if there is something that can be done about it, I would very much appreciate your advice and guidance. I would be willing to put a petition together with my neighbors, but I think the reason they haven't done anything, and nor have I up to this point, is because we all, probably all sort of felt it would be, like I said, the house, the horse was out of the barn, and what do you do? If you go to the third page on here, uh, within the past couple of months, uh, they've marked out a rectangle behind the big building. I don't know what that is, uh, for, and I've spoken with, with Heather, and she doesn't know either. We don't know what's going on. I haven't had close relations with the neighbor there, because like I say, we're, everybody else in the neighborhood is, is not happy with it at all. My concern is, is not so much the past, but the future. First of all, on slide three, what's, what do they have, what are they going to do, or what would they like to do? You know, are they want to, do they want to eventually put up another building? Do they want to, you know, put in a parking lot? I don't know. But my other concern, in slide four there, there's a, there's a, uh, a plat of, on the, the left-hand side is the parcels on Proudie Road, uh, including mine. Mine is the dark outline there. My house sits back from the road. You really can't see it from the road. It's got about a 600-foot driveway. It was built, maybe one of you knew Ivan I. We bought the house from him. He was a builder here, uh, like 10, 20 years ago. Uh, I, on the left-hand side of that slide four, I've cropped that picture and rotated it a bit just to show you the orientation of my house, which is 111-59. The, the house with the, uh, 111-57 with the warehouse kind of building. And then right next to it is 111-69 on the other side. My neighbor passed away, uh, about a year and a half ago. That was an original house that was built in the late 1950s. It's got a septic system in the ground. It's not connected to the, a public, uh, sewer. And there's no problem with that from my perspective, but, uh, I do certainly expect that house to go for, well, I, I know the house will go for sale, because I've spoken with the, the children of, of Larry. And it was for sale this past year, but it did not sell. An interesting thing is, when my neighbor that built the big warehouse there, when I spoke with him as he was starting to build that, which was just after when my other neighbor passed away, he asked me, do I, oh, do I know who owns that lot over there now that my neighbor's passed away? He says he's got a friend of his down in Wickliffe or Willoughby, who really likes what he's done out here and would like to look at purchasing a piece of property out here. Maybe he's a, you know, a small businessman also, and my only assumption is do something similar to this house that's here. And so the last thing I want is to see a similar side kind of building or whatever come up on the other side of me at the same time. So that's my reason to come before you today. I thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes. I, I appreciate any advice or guidance that I could help at, that could, uh, mitigate this situation or keep it from happening in the future. And I'll turn it back over to you.
When you, when you ask what can be done, okay, what, what is your, what is your expectations or what do you think that we should do as a township? What, what are your thoughts? I mean, you're asking if there's anything that can be done. I'm, I'm going to assume at this point that the construction was done within the guidelines of the, the existing zoning resolution as it sits. Otherwise, I don't think people, we have zoning, so people just can't randomly construct large buildings and take up big footprints without being within the guideline, because they're going to have to pull permits, they're going to have to come to Heather. Heather's going to look at what they're doing.
Right.
She's going to tell them, you can't do that, or you can do that, I would assume. Not, not always. We hope that people follow the rules and guidelines. But for something of this magnitude, I mean, obviously, they didn't just, they didn't just throw this building up overnight. This was a project, and somebody did this, and I would, I would think that under the existing zoning resolution and the zoning designation of this property, that they did this within the guidelines of the zoning resolution, and they, what they're doing is they're able to do. Okay, so my question to you is, as, to, because we want to try to help, obviously, if this is a problem, um, what, what is it that you would like us to do? What, what is your thoughts? Have you put anything together as far as what you think should be done to, to alleviate this kind of a future problem?
Well, I, I, I'm only going to say a little bit, and then maybe I'll turn it over to you, Heather, because Heather and I have spoken a couple of times on this. One of the things is the garage in the back. And the way the building looks is not, does not look residential by any means. And to relate to that, uh, my wife and I have occasionally been out at the front of our property, right along the street, and doing, pulling weeds and doing that kind of stuff. On more, on a number of occasions, people have just stopped, those first couple of months after that was built, stopped right where we are, and asked, asked us pointedly, why did we build that right there? And, uh, and then, of course, we first explained it, well, it isn't ours.
Right.
It's somebody else's. And so there, the complaints have been more than just the immediate 10 or 15 houses on both sides of this, but it's, it's been very noticeable to other residents in Concord, and it does not have the residential appearance. That garage on the back, uh, I, and I'm quoting, quoting Heather properly, she said it was maybe around 3,000 square feet or something, which is, there's two garages there. There's an automobile garage, which is, I would consider sort of a regular garage. You can see that in the picture on the second page. But then there's this larger garage with commercial-sized doors on it, which by itself is around 3,000 square feet. And that's not in any means, okay, if, I understand, if you've got a business, maybe, you know, maybe you'd want to park, use that for parking a truck or something like that, but I mean, it starts to, it does not look, does not have the look of the residential area that I, that I assume that we're all hoping that we want Concord to, to be and to.
I noticed you put some dimensions on you, or snapshots, uh, of the parcels. Okay, but just for my own edification, what's this, what, how many acres do you own?
Okay.
How big is your prop, how big is your lot?
Yeah, my, my lot's around five and a half acres.
About five and a half? Okay.
The 111-57, which is the L-shaped block with the, the building on it, I'd say that's about an acre and a half.
Okay.
Don't force me to hold my hand on the Bible, but that's, and then the, uh, the other one, 111-69, is a little bit over three acres.
Okay.
That's kind of a strange parcel. You'll notice it's very narrow.
Right.
And I, I think that's one of the sort of problems with it, because of what you need for, you know, how, how much width you need if you want to split something up behind there.
Right. Understand. Okay. So what, so what, you know?
So I, I guess, may, maybe to get back on that and get to the point, is I really think, and, and even a neighbor of mine who says that he had wanted to build a garage, a regular garage, in the back of his, um, in the back of his house, in fact, is a neighbor just across the street, said that he was told he could only, it's a detached building, it could only be, I don't know, 1,500 square feet, 1,200, I don't know.
Right.
Something like that.
And that would be, and that's where it falls.
He was upset because this guy had connected it to his house and then built a huge monstrosity.
Right.
And like I said, it, um, my worry is that, you know, in 20 years' time, is this going to be Proudie Road, the light industrial, commercial road rather than the residential?
Or can't be, because it would require, it would require zoning changes. It's not a commercial, it's not a commercial manufacturing or commercial industrial, light industrial, whatever district. So you can't just randomly build businesses.
It's already gotten.
Right.
You know, that's what people think when they go up and down the street, unfortunately, already.
I understand, right. So, so what is your, is your thought that we need to change the zoning resolution to disallow large buildings like this and maybe adjust the square footage allow? Because it's based on the size of the lot, if I'm not mistaken. Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the, the size of the lot is what dictates what kind of accessory buildings or, or, you know, external buildings they can, they can put up on their property. If it's a large lot, lot of acreage, they can obviously have a little more leeway on the size of the building, but smaller lot, then they have, you know, much more restrictions, you know, in that district. I'm assuming that's a, is that, is that R1 over there, Heather?
Yeah, yeah, yes. This property's R1 on Proudie.
So it's R1. So it's, it's residential and everything, if you want to, if you, and you can go online if you want to do some research, uh, and I would strongly recommend you do that. Go online and with, for your neighbors and everybody else for their own sake, take a look at the R1 zoning district and see what there's, because there's a list of allowable uses, there's a list of conditional uses, there's a list of different things you can do on that, on your property. So I, I would recommend you become familiar with that, and if there's some things you see that look like glaring issues, okay, then you say, this, this shouldn't be allowed, because this is what happens.
Right.
Okay, then I think that as, as a zoning commission, we would be more than glad to take your recommendations or your comments under advisement, and we can look at potentially changing the zoning text to, uh, to accommodate your, your concerns and, and restrict some of these things that go on. But if it's, if it's allowed and it falls within the guidelines of the zoning resolution, there really isn't a whole lot we can do as a zoning commission, or as, or Heather can do as, as the zoning, you know, inspector, uh, to, to make changes. You know, we can't, we can't stop something that's allowed to go in there just arbitrarily. It becomes, it becomes a big issue, you know?
I guess my, my thought on it, after having thought for quite a while, uh, a lot, to my understanding, a lot of the zoning kind of things are, you know, are, are sort of like engineering measure, you know, engineering measurements? I'm an engineer, so, okay, you can build a house so and, so and so, or whatever. But then when I go travel anywhere and look at something, it's usually the appearances of something that strikes people most. it's usually the appearances of something that strikes people most and what puts ideas in their mind, what convinces them, oh, this is that kind of neighborhood. It's the appearance thing. And I would say if there's, you know, besides the fact this is a huge garage with, I think they're like, probably, I don't know if it's 12-foot ceiling in there. It's not a regular eight or nine-foot ceiling. It's same, it's got another piece of two-by-four-by-eight on the top of it. So I think it's 12-foot ceiling. So if there's, you know, if somehow, A, restrict garages and/or, you know, it'd be one thing if the whole house was a mansion and it all had 12-foot ceilings in it. Obviously, if it looked like a house, it's a house. But when the house portion of this is so small, and I guess I will ask you, if you have an opportunity to drive down Crowdy Road, it's just the section down here between Ravenna and Auburn. You go up that and you won't miss it. So I, you know, if there's a way you can do that, I invite you to over to my house, actually, if you want to look at this from the back.
Do you have beer?
Do you have beer?
No, do you have?
Beer, wine, what, hard liquor?
That's good to know.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyway.
Anything else you want to discuss? I think this is a good conversation. And I, speaking for myself, I appreciate you coming in and bringing this to our attention. And this presentation is very helpful because visually, it's always good to see what's going on versus somebody just describing it. So I, and I know this takes time to do, and I appreciate you taking the time to put this together and bringing this to our attention. And this is the reason why we have a public participation forum as a part of our hearings, so that people can make recommendations or can voice opinions outside of opposition to a project that's going on in public hearings and things like that. But just as general conversation for us, this is great. I really appreciate you coming in. I appreciate that.
Appreciate having you.
No, I appreciate the presentation. And we'll take some time here and talk with Heather and see what we can do. And then we'll, and I would like to know if you would make yourself available if we start to do something about this kind of a scenario, if you would be willing to be a participant in helping us either craft some, craft some changes in the verbiage of the text or whatever.
Any thing that I could do that's, you know, reasonable amount of time, yes.
Sure, yeah, because we have public, I mean, we do work sessions. We're about to, you know, when we're done here with this portion, we're gonna do a presentation. And then after that, we're gonna go into a work session. And during those work sessions, you know, we can certainly invite outside resources to give us advice or information or opinions on things. And, you know, I would love to have you be a part of it. So anything from the board? Frank, any questions you have?
I was just, were you living there when this building was being built?
Yes, yes.
Were you approached at any time by the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Pardon?
Were you approached anytime from the Zoning Board of Appeals in regards to the size of this building?
No, no, I think the first time, I think I came up here and spoke with Heather about it. But by that time, it had already been, you know, it was already Ford Foundation and the frame is starting to go up.
Right.
And before they started building, when I had been talking with him more frequently, originally, they said, oh, we're going to, we're going to expand the houses a bit. We've got an architect to do that. We're gonna, we're gonna obviously have a garage for our cars on the house. And then we're gonna, you know, we're gonna build, we are gonna build in back. We're gonna build a bigger shed, but it was a separate building. And at the time, I guess, and my thought was, well, you know, a lot of people have separate buildings out back and, okay, oh, he's got, you know, he runs a little business, so...
Right. And I don't want to interrupt, but if you could do me a favor, stand behind the podium because the mic, and it's nothing other than the fact that this is being recorded. And if you get too far away, we may, people that would watch this, and believe it or not, there are people that actually watch these things after the fact, they may not be able to hear you as clearly.
Sure.
So if you could, because we want to make sure we get your comments, you know, so people can hear, so. But at any rate, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That was really it, at least initially. That was not the impression that they gave me. I mean, I knew they were gonna expand the house. The original house was, again, 1950s, very small. I was happy, I was, at the time, both my wife and I were happy to see that they were expanding it. We were thinking, well, it's gonna be a nicer house in the neighborhood, you know? Garage, everybody's got a garage. And, okay, so he's gonna build a shed out back, you know? Or maybe another garage, and, yeah, surprised.
This new building here, is that on the L-shaped?
Yes.
That's on the L-shaped, so that's...
On the L-shaped.
111...
57.
57, okay.
Yeah, if you look at that first picture and maybe Mr. Lingott Velter, if you could, you got the bigger blow up there, maybe that could help Mr. Repper out a little bit. It's easier to see. The, this is looking west, right off of Crowdy Road, going up Crowdy Road. And in fact, right directly in front of us, that green, most of that green grass is the 11169 residence next door to me. And then my driveway comes up, but it's, mine's only a narrow, like 50-foot wide, right away. So you really can't see it, other than there's a little bit of shrubbery out at the front.
Right.
So...
Okay. Hiram, you have any other comments?
No, no.
Just so. Rich, you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I recall this being brought to our attention when it started construction a couple of years ago. I visited then at the time as the structure was going up. I'm, first of all, I appreciate the presentation, thank you. I think, to my colleagues here, I think, speaking more to architectural standard and scale, the way, is it appropriate for the property, for residential? I think that's more to what you're indicating. Architectural standard and the scale of what, yes. Yes, I'm an engineer as well, so. And so I speak in those terms. So that's what I think you're referring to, and that's something we could certainly examine here.
Yeah, the siding on it looks, again, the siding is vertical siding as opposed to horizontal.
Horizontal, yes.
So again, it sort of looks a little bit more commercial in nature. The fact that there's not a lot of windows across the back and they're a little bit oddly spaced, again...
The architectural standard and scale, yes.
Make, doesn't make it sort of seem like, well, you know, it doesn't look as nice. I don't know how else to say it.
Understood, understood. Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Again, I thank you for coming in. I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate your comments. And we take these matters, you know, seriously. And we will certainly, you know, take this under consideration, whether we need to make a work session. And I would hope that we could reach out to you and have you participate in...
Do you want me to delete my name and number with Heather or...
Sure, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, continue to keep the channels open with Heather. And then Heather is always a good conduit for us to provide information, things that are going on, so that would be awesome. We really appreciate you coming in.
Oh, thank you, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Thanks so much. Are you okay? Everything, you got it all, you got everything?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, super, thanks for coming in, we appreciate that.
You guys have questions, don't hesitate to ask. And I guess the invitation for sitting on the back porch is open too.
Sure, okay, well, thanks again, we appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience that is interested in having anything to say for the evening's public participation? Okay, so we'll close that part of this evening's hearing or meeting, and we will move on to new business. And the new business issued today in front of us is a site plan review for application number 57, submitted by Auburn Vocational School District for an addition to an existing building and to change the building use from classroom slash educational use to administrative office use for the school district. So I assume we have some representatives here that would like to speak. So if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, that would be wonderful.
They're Auburn's normal board meetings tonight, so.
Okay.
Not long back though. So I've been here before. Matter of fact, on the Public Safety Training Building, we got about half the footers in and the pre-engineered metal building comes next week. So looking forward to having a bunch of students in there and as a byproduct. And as I intimated when I talked to you guys about that, that there's some shuffling of classrooms and spaces.
Right.
And right now, this building's being used for fire training classes. Those are being moved over to the new Public Safety Training Building. The addition that we, I worked with you guys on, my gosh, maybe almost 10 years ago, that the administration moved into, back when Maggie Lynch was still there, has been ripped asunder. And they've ended up having to give that space to a lot of the different groups that support the schools on all of the school districts that Auburn supports. For example, the group of people who disperse and send out student teachers in the morning. You know, so they've taken a lot of those offices. So the administration people are kind of broken up throughout that building and not being very productive. So this is an attempt to use space that very well may be in the future, the next nursing building down the road in the future. But looking on a five-to-10-year plan there. But for right now, the administration would be moving into there.
Excuse me, do you mind for the record to state your name for the stenographer? I know we all know you.
No problem. Dale Griffiths, Cold Harbor Building Company, 115 Industrial Parkway, Chardan, Ohio. I'm the owner's representative for Auburn Vocational School District on new and ongoing construction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We have a staff report on this project. I'll skip over the zoning staff comments because those will be addressed in the conditions that need to be met in order for the conditional approval. This Lake County Stormwater Management Department says the downspouts for the new addition need to be splash blocked?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it is known, is it known where the yard drains, the four-inch lines behind the proposed addition discharge to?
They go somewhere. And they were put in by someone and they drained to something.
Awesome.
Yes, so when we get there and start working...
Answered your question.
Well, and it's one of those things you get when you, you know, it's an old house. And Auburn Career Center Construction Classes did an addition on it umpteen years ago. So now it's a bastardized house that's made up of two different things. One's conventional wood construction, the other one's masonry. That's covered with conventional wood construction to make it look like the other one. There's no as-built, nothing. It's functioning as it is. Over time, it's been converted from septic to city sewer and from well to city water. So that's not an issue there. There is some drainage in the back. So once we get there and start digging for the foundations and put everything in, we'll be able to investigate where everything goes. And most likely, probably just revitalize it. Over time, as you know, things get filled with silt and covered up with grass and, you know, especially that rat hole that we fixed up next door to it a couple of years ago that actually was next to the neighbor that the backyard had, you know, or the people who had owned it had completely grown over. So the schools cleaned it up and they maintain it now. And it looks, even looks nice from the highway when you're going by. So this is ostensibly a living room addition on a house, is what it's gonna look like on any set of drawings.
Are the, and then they're asking, are the yard drains behind the addition still functioning?
I don't think anything functions back there.
Okay.
So like I said, though, when we go, when we dig, we're gonna try and figure out where things went and revitalize what can be revitalized.
Okay, and then also it says plans to be submitted to Lake County Stormwater Management Department for review as a part of the building permit process.
That's already been done by Doug Courtney. Everything's okay. Soil and water have given their okay. I have fire, soil and water, sewer and water. Those people all have their letters to Courtney and those have all been submitted for the permit. So the only piece of paper I need left to get my permit, which is in for Lori right now, is you guys.
Okay, and then Concord Township Fire Department had also submitted some questions and some statements. They said that all work must conform to the current Ohio Fire and Building Codes under the Ohio Administrative Code, which I'm sure you're aware.
Yeah, we are planning on a full extension of the fire alarm system.
Right, your site plan conforms to the required water supply requirements. One hydrant on the roadway is 127 feet away from the building and two more are within 500 feet of the first hydrant. The other point they make is your site plan conforms to the required access, existing parking lot provided adequate access. And the final point is that they are looking forward to seeing the building plans. So they seem to be okay with everything and you're aware of what their requirements are, so.
They're happy for the fire students getting a new building, is what they have for it.
And then the Lake County Department of Utilities, they basically came back and said they have no comments. So that's the departments and/or agencies that are involved in this project and that you've heard what they had to say.
Yeah, you know, utility-wise, burden-wise, you know, we're taking a building that has, you know, three or four teachers and 20 students in it during the day and converting into a place right now that's only planning on having six people there full-time.
Right.
So much less, you know, much less load on the sewer and water and everything else.
Okay, Frank, you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
None, Mr. Chairman.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Repper?
No issues here.
Okay, Rich, anything you have to say?
I do not, other than a question for, well, the board and for Heather. So is there any concern that the zoning remains to be R1? It's R1 zoning for a school and now an administration. Any concern that the zoning is still in R1?
No, I mean, I looked at this as part of the school use, the administrative offices for the school, which is a conditionally permitted use in the R1 district.
So as a conditional use in R1, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
And we can address that in our work session.
It was my understanding that all the projects, including public safety building, the building right now fall under the conditional use for the school that's there. And like I said, as far as any neighbor might go, you're actually gonna see much less traffic in that building with who's gonna be there.
Yeah, no, my, my concern was public perception of the school and an R1 zoning is like, maybe we need to do something about that.
Well, basically, the staff recommendation is basically, they recommend conditional approval of the site plan review application subject to the following conditions. Number one, revise the landscape plan to include at least one two-inch caliper deciduous tree or small flowering trees with creative placement for every 35 feet of road frontage along the frontage of the lot. Okay? Number two is work with the Lake County Stormwater Management Departments to address the comments stated above in the staff report, which you said you're going to do when you start to excavate, figure out where these things go. So that's good. So with the conditions that they've put in front of you, you're okay with meeting these conditions?
Yes, sir.
You don't see any issues meeting these conditions?
No, sir.
Okay, completely and fully?
Yes, sir.
Okay, super.
To the extent that we can actually find out where the pipes go.
Heather, do you have any comments?
No, it's good to see that.
You're okay with everything?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Okay, unless you have anything further to mention or discuss or questions you have, then.
No, sir, other than if you want for your work session, make it that the conditional uses and conditional use every time I come up in front of you for a project back there. Because like I said, there's probably going to be, we've got just enough property for maybe two more projects back there and they can fill that space with it, they're going to.
Okay, super. Well, thank you very much for coming in and.
Thank you for your time as always.
Absolutely. Okay.
I can go.
Oh, yeah, you're.
Okay.
Well, we have to vote on the.
Yeah, unless you want to hang on.
If you want to wait and.
Watch us vote.
I might as well.
Okay. I, right now, we have a site plan review application number fifty-seven that's been submitted by Auburn Vocational School District for an additional, for an addition to an existing building and to change the building use from classroom slash educational to administrative office use for the school district. I would entertain a motion in the affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion for application number fifty-seven as a conditional approval of the site plan review application subject to the conditions in the staff report.
I'll second.
So I have a motion made and seconded. Heather, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Rep.
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Langford?
Yes.
So we have, let the record reflect, we have four I's, no nays, no extensions, and your, your initial site plan review application has been accepted.
Thank you.
So we're good to go. And I'm sure there'll be continued processes, so.
Okay.
I will probably see you again.
Well, I hope so for them. They're doing a great job with the kids and expanding, that's the goal, so.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you coming in. Okay, so that checks off new business. Now old business. Here we go. Time to gird your loins. We have a work session to review zoning district uses for both commercial and residential And I'm trying to recall the last meeting we had, we, I think we were going to look at the R1, R4, B1, B2, BX and C for this first round, kind of get a, get a feel for where we're going on.
Correct.
So let's start with our, well, you know what, before we jump into this, Heather, let me, I want to revisit this issue with this gentleman from Proudie Road. Was there, what was, what's the history behind this and was there anything that was, you know, that we had a problem with, with building this building or?
Well, and if, as Mr. Eiffelise mentioned, I did bring this up as a topic that we did have one or two work sessions on when we were talking about potentially as a way to maybe eliminate the negative impacts from, that might address some of his concern, not architecturally so much, but possibly was putting in a size limitation on an attached garage to a single-family dwelling. And I was jotting down some different ideas here too, just after listening to him, you know, maybe there's some ways to bake in where like the garage roof can't be taller than the main living area of the home to potentially eliminate some, something like that in the future. We could potentially explore like, based under our limited home rule authority, do we have the ability to add in some maybe architectural more standards? Do we want to go that route or, or there's some easier modifications in the zoning resolution? And even as he was standing here, I was thinking like, we have the maximum size on the detached accessory buildings, right?
Right.
How difficult would that be and how amenable would that be to then maybe say that those standards still apply to attached garages?
Mm-hmm.
And hold them to those same square footages? That could, that could potentially be an easy way to prevent a three thousand square foot attached garage onto a home. I mean, if that rule was in place, then that garage would only be a thousand and twenty-four square feet versus the three thousand plus whatever that two-car garage one was.
What's the use?
Well, garage, I mean, I, I don't know, story.
Is he running a business out of there? Is he doing, you know, what's he doing?
I have no, I know, I know he is a small business owner, but I have had a conversation with his wife and him before that, putting that clear to them that you can't run a business, you know, from this location, you can't have, you know, vehicles coming to and from, you know, related to the business and, because something like that, you know, is concerning, you know, it meets the, the size, the location, those kind of setback things, but then sometimes that brings in things that aren't necessarily allowed in zoning, like someone maybe trying to use a large building like that for a commercial operation, which we do not allow. We don't allow home occupations to be run out of, you know, the accessory buildings or being.
So what did they say they were going to do with the building?
They have an RV that they're going to park in the, in the, in one of the larger bays and that was the only really thing that I was told, specific, you know.
Have you been there and gone, looked in, looked in it?
I've been, yeah, during construction, you know, I, I saw, I was in the house, like the, the addition onto the, the older home. I, I walked in the garage and they had some just stuff in there, normal stuff, and I know my assistant, Mike, has inspected it as well and everything looks good. I mean, it's compliant, you know, it appears to be a residential use and just a large garage at this point. I also.
But it was allowable, I mean, they didn't do anything.
Yeah, there were no variances approved.
They didn't, they didn't go to the BGA.
There wasn't anything in the zoning resolution that told me that I could not approve that sized garage onto a home.
Right.
There's other ways that you can maybe address it, like, well, we talked about, like, we went through that whole thing where I did that research on what the sizes are and what, you know, all that, and at the end of the day, the board at that time did not want to take that on as an amendment, so.
Yeah.
But I, you know, the concern, you know, it could be on any property, you know, even if you don't address necessarily the architectural standards and scale, like the size of, you know, scale, I guess, size, right? But as it relates to the main living area, you could maybe bake in some standards on that. I don't know how we would address the vertical siding, I don't know that we want to go through this, like a formal design review and architectural review like you would in a municipality, but maybe there's some other ways to change what's in the zoning that, to address that.
Is there anything that you think that we could do that would make sense to prevent something like this from happening again? What's, what's your recommended, what do you, what's your thoughts?
Well, as I stated previously, we could consider capping the max size of an attached garage or making, you know, with some outright number or relative to the main living area of the home, we could do it that way.
But this isn't attached though, is it?
Yes, it is.
That big, that.
Yes, that is attached to the house.
That's why.
Yes, that's the whole reason, likely why the property owner did it attached, because they knew they could not do it detached, that size. And that kind of jives with what the resident was stating initially when their initial conversations with the property owner, they thought they were going to do a detached building on the back and likely someone looked at the zoning and they discovered that they couldn't do that, so they, they found another way to do it, which is just attach it onto the house.
So you, so you think that the best way to prevent this from happening again would be to cap the, the square footage of the attached garage?
Yeah.
And that would be, how, how would that be ratio-wise, how would you, how would you cap that based on the size of the house? Based on what? What would you decide to make, change the, how would you limit that?
I mean, it would be, there's a lot of different ways you could do it. You could, you know, in relationship to the size of the main living area or just a flat-out number, you know.
Like the detached?
Like the detached.
So if they, if they were, if it was detached from the home, what would be the limitation on the size of the building?
On that parcel?
Yeah.
Because he's, he's less than two acres in size, a thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
One outbuilding only, a thousand and twenty-four square feet, that's it, period. He would not have the ability to do a second building. And that's, that's also, it kind of relates to the work session and some of the suggestions I had for you in the memo back in March too, talking about accessory buildings, and I know we're not quite at there yet, but it might, this might tie in nicely to that because I was asking you guys to maybe take a look at some of our existing accessory building regulations as far as the number of buildings that are allowed on lots greater than two acres and then also the fact that we only allow one accessory building on a lot less than two acres, where we have a lot of variances approved for that, and I think there, there's the ability to maybe make some changes to that for the detached accessory buildings and it might be who us to, to maybe look at, well, how does that work with the attached?
And therein lies the issue that we deal with, you know, it's like, you know, how do you cover, how do you resolve all the contingencies that could potentially happen with some of these conditional uses, accessory buildings and things like, I mean, who would invent, somebody obviously, pretty smart, figure out that if they attached it to their main building, that they could go hog wild.
Yep.
Okay. So they got some, they got some advice from somebody, either caught this in the zoning code, an attorney or, or some engineer or somebody that caught this and said, hey, here's a way we can do this. Attach a breezeway between the two buildings and they consider, they're considered attached and we can, we can go berserk and we can give you whatever sized building you want. And, and, and so obviously there's a, I don't want to call it a loophole, but it kind of is a loophole.
No, it is a loophole.
It allowed them to do this that, you know, that, 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 we don't, I mean, you can't foresee everything, you just can't. I mean, it's almost impossible to do it, to try to head off everything at the, it's just, it's, it's, it's crazy. But we see the results of what happens when creative people, creative minds get together and come up with a way to get around the regulations. So I, I, I appreciate the guys' concerns.
Yeah.
And I think, and I honestly believe we should, while we're doing this work session, couldn't come at a better time, actually. I think we can make some, we can make some, some serious changes and, and cap, I think that's a good idea to cap it. I think that's what we should do if it's, if it's attached to the building and we put it, I, I'm, I'm never a fan of arbitrary or numbers. I, I think that that causes a problem because then there, then it becomes, I think it gets into a legal battle, because it's like, how did you come up with that number? You know, where if you say it's relational to the, the footprint of the house and it's easy, you know, well, you're allowed, if the house is two thousand square feet, you can have a two thousand square foot garage, that's your limit. Okay, so, or if it's a fifteen hundred square, whatever it is, or.
Certain percentage of.
A percent, or a percentage of your, your livable space, that's how big the garage can be and that's your cap. I think that's a better way to go because then if somebody wants a bigger garage, they got to build a bigger house, you know, or they got to do something and it's not just, just let's add it on because we can, you know, let's attach it and have fun. So I, I would be more willing to consider, you know, some sort of a cap and then tie that size into the residents so that they, I think the height also would be a good, you know, it can't be bigger, taller or higher than the, than the main building, that, that the house. I think that would be a good idea to, to put in there, something to that effect, so. Any comments from the board, Frank?
No, that's a good idea. Just for here, we're not arbitrarily just hitting one person for.
Right.
To do something, to stop one thing, it'll be a versatile thing we can use for our, our complete zoning district, which, but I think is a, especially since one thing too, we don't have an architectural review board in the township.
Right.
You know, so we can't dictate what the building is going to look like, but if they have a size and a theme arbitrarily, I think they would stick with that.
Right.
To make, if anyone has a knife or their home or anything, they would want to be looked identical to the home to enhance, so it doesn't look like this, like a sure film.
Right.
So. Mr. Chairman, do you guys recall the email sometime last year, the resident over on Clear Lake had sent you guys an email regarding her neighbor had built a detached garage right at the maximum size, thousand twenty-four square feet, very similar in siding, the vertical up and down siding, and her concern with that accessory building was twofold, similar to Heather's. Scale and size, it looked very commercial in relationship to the single-story ranch that it went along with, taller than the main principal building on the lot. And you get into this vertical siding, which I don't know if we can address vertical siding, but point is like that the building mass-wise looked and appeared larger than the home that was even on the lot.
Right.
And that's kind of like what we're talking about, you know, detached versus attached, same thing.
Yeah, right.
That, that one you were talking about now has running different colored lights, running all the way around their doors.
Oh, geez.
Yeah. Turn them on and, you know, there, there they go, different colored lights.
Wow. Wow.
And can I just add, there might be some relief for townships at some point. There is a bill that has been introduced regarding allowing architectural review board-like committees and boards for townships. It has not actually gone through the whole legislative process, but has been introduced and discussed. So it is possible we might be able at some point to regulate appearance, the materials.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll go on the record publicly and say that I am opposed to architectural review boards and things like that for, I just think that, that's a, that's something that can go south real fast. I, I see that as being a very contentious issue and I just, I see that just opening a can of worms, you know, that's a Pandora's box. Open it up and, you know, once it's out, then try to stuff that back in the box, good luck. I, I don't like architectural review boards on that, I don't think we should be in the business of telling people how things should look and what they should look like and how they should build things. I think you should have the right to build, as long as you're within the zoning resolution and it's legal, I think you should be able to do it, what you choose as far as colors are concerned and, and verticals, I mean, vertical and horizontal siding, vertical siding's becoming very popular. If you notice, a lot of new construction, a lot of houses have, you know, siding with, you know, horizontal siding on the, on the front of the house, on the sides of the house, I'm seeing it more and more, you know, so, I mean, George up, up the street where he's working on Corn Popper Farms, I mean, a lot of, a lot of the siding on that building is, is, is horizontal, is vertical siding. So, yeah, and, but that's a trend, you know, trends come and go, you know.
Oh, they sure do.
You know, it's like, like little exit copper roofs and, you know, and things like that, you know, things, it's real popular for a while and a lot of people build houses and put it on there and then eh, the fat, the fat kind of passes and they move on to something else, you know, so I, I don't know, I, I just, I don't know. That, that becomes a, a very difficult thing for me to try to manage. And then enforcement, you know, then, then you get, not only then do you get into the management of the aspect, but then you get into the enforcement. So what if somebody does it anyway? And how are we going to enforce it? There's certain things, we're limited as what we can do, you know, so, and it's just, I, personally, I would like to avoid that if we can, but you know, I mean, whatever happens, happens. I mean, I, you know.
Well, you, you had said you don't want it tied to a number.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if we have a basis for that number, I'd like to keep the number. If we have ten twenty-four for an outbuilding on a one-acre, two-acre lot, then that's the basis for my garage. You can't have anything bigger than that outbuilding. I'm, I'm kind of opposed to half of the square footage for the house or whatever, however you want to do that. I, I'd rather have it based upon an outbuilding where we have a basis already and if somebody comes up and says, well, how'd you come up with that? Well, we came up with that because we have this number for an accessory building on the lot and that's what we're going to go with. We thought that was appropriate, thank you very much, goodbye. But it can go either way. I'm not opposed to having a four thousand square foot house and a two thousand square foot garage on a one-acre lot, not, whatever, but it, it all depends on what, what, what we all decide upon, it really does.
Okay.
And then let's hear both sides.
Okay. Rich, any comments?
No, if we're to delve into this, maybe we could make it a priority in this sequence that we're going through. This seems to be a hot button, perhaps.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I, whatever, I'm, I'm, I just, to me, when you, sometimes when you come up with arbitrary numbers, they can be punitive.
They can, yeah.
And so I, I'm worried about that, but I, but I also, I see your point, I, I'm not totally opposed to make, coming up with a, a number, you know, as long as, as long as it's within reason, you know, that's always to me is, is, is it within reason? Is it a reasonable number? Is it, is it something that people can work with? Are we putting an unnecessary burden on the homeowner, the property owner, you know, that, that concerns me, I don't want to do that. But in the same token, we, we can't just have Wild Wild West.
No, you can't.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. All right, thank you, Heather, I appreciate your input on that.
Sure.
Very good, okay, uh, R1, let's tackle R1, uh, existing.
Can I screen myself for a moment?
Yes.
My package is out in the car.
Your package is out?
Yeah, my, my review package.
Oh, go get it.
I will.
By all means.
I will.
We'll take a brief recess. For Mr. Reford.
Amble out to the car.
Okay, we are back up, uh, the recess is over and, uh, we'll go back to our, our work session here. Let's, uh, let's talk about R1 and, um, the permitted uses and principally permitted uses and the existing permitted accessory uses in R1. Anybody can dive in wherever they like.
How can we have an agricultural use in R1?
Well, it's basically the agricultural use is permitted in all zoning districts across the board. It's a permitted use, you know, on everything from R1 to Town Hall Center.
I, I see that, but. We're doing R1.
Right.
Should be permitted in R1. Definition of agriculture.
Yeah.
Five one. Farming, ranging, agriculture, aqua.
Alga.
Alga, algal cultural meaning. The farming of algae, aquaculture, apiculture, all those cultures. Including but not limited to the care and raising of livestock. Horses, fur bearing animals. Poultry husbandry and the production of poultry and poultry products, dairy production. And production of field crops, tobacco, fruits, blah, blah, blah. Timber, pasture, pasturage, any combination of the foregoing. And the processing, drying, storage and marketing of agricultural products. When those activities are conducted in conjunction with, but not, but are secondary to. Such husbandry or production.
What's the date on that?
The date on that is twelve four, twenty fifteen.
So that, that, that verbiage is about nine years old, almost ten, more than ten years old.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Was it twelve? Yeah, twelve.
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah, so December of twenty fifteen, so December of this year will be nine years old. Obviously, some changes have occurred in society over the last nine years. Is it, is there anything that we, we think we ought to? Consider on that definition with, with changes or do you, or don't you feel that that is a, that is a, a good? Or that shouldn't be a permitted use within, uh, an R1 zoning district, which are?
Well, okay, he, here, here's the difference. Allow this stuff in R1 or have an R1 where you can have chickens. I'd rather put it, have an R1 and not agricultural, but allow them to put in chickens. But not horses, not cows, not sheep. I don't want that stuff in R1.
Rich, you're okay with chickens?
Not especially, but yes.
So the Ohio Vice Code requires, how about this? Hiram Vice Code prohibits townships from regulating certain agricultural activities. That definition, I think that you read, I think is actually pulled directly from your Hiram Vice Code. We can, townships can only regulate it on very certain circumstances in residential districts. And so I think that's probably why you see agricultural use in all of these zoning.
That's right, that's right.
Correct, now there are very limited, you know, in a platted subdivision, for instance, I forget, is it one acre or less or more than one acre, but less than five, I forget. But there are ways that the township can regulate certain agricultural uses in those districts. But, and that's literally by the Vice Code, unfortunately, we cannot abrogate that.
And we have that same thing with stone quarry, right? And we have that same thing with stone quarries, we can't do anything about it.
Slightly different, there does have to be a reasonable, um. You know, the reason why we are regulating it, right, whereas.
I think that's the surface extraction of sand and gravel or other earth materials.
Right, right.
Otherwise.
You can't outright prohibit it, but with, with the mining, you can regulate it. Whereas the difference is in agricultural, only very, very specific examples can even regulate it, otherwise township is prohibited from regulating it.
So if I may, the specific example is just R1, just because of the lot size.
So agricultural, right, so agricultural on lots of one acre or less can be regulated by the township's.
There, that's where, that's why I agree with Hiram, doesn't belong in R1.
Or.
Well, but isn't, how, how big is R1?
A half an acre with sewer.
Half an acre. Three quarters with the sewer.
Three quarters of an acre without sewer.
Three quarters of an acre with sewer.
Three quarters, no sewer.
Minimum.
That's site developments there, right.
Okay, so my neighbor up the street with chickens on a two acre lot is okay.
Yes.
With chickens, but not. But he wouldn't be.
Under R1.
Under, well, yeah, he's under, he's R1, but he's not agricultural.
I'm sorry, he says two acres, if he was doing it today, two acres falls under R6. Zoning district, R1 again is three quarters of an acre without sewer, half an acre with sewer. Small lots, subdivision, homes.
Okay.
Hundred foot, hundred foot frontage. Two hundred fifty foot.
So, so Heather, my place, you know where I live.
You're on Knightsbridge, you're R1 as well, but you are, you have larger lots.
But if I were to do it now, I'd be R8?
No, you're, you're R1, but your lots far exceed the minimum lot size, because when your development went in, that was the style that developers were doing, large lots, bigger homes, septic, well, wells. But everything that's really being built now under R1 is exactly what Mr. Evans was saying, half acre, they're, they're cramming them in.
But if I were to build mine now, it would be still R1?
Yeah, if you were able to, you could split that lot up and do, if you have a two acre lot, you could do four half acre lots and build three other homes on there, as long as it met everything and everyone could have chickens. Whatever, I don't know. No, but we do have like provisions in six oh one B that does have some regulations on the agricultural uses that are allowed.
Six oh one.
Righty, are we allowed to like maybe not permit agricultural uses in like the commercial districts? Or do we, does that fall under still the same fifteen lots in a platted subdivision? Because to me, allowing, which I don't think anyone's gonna really do, but it just seems odd once I put this whole table together, I'm like, why are we even allowing agricultural uses in business districts?
I agree, I agree, we haven't even gotten there, we're, we're talking.
And I was just talking uses, like I, I was kind of hoping that we would look at as uses across the table and. Last month, we kind of, the board decided to look at it a different way, which is fine, but. You are allowed to, um. Let me take that back, I don't think you can prohibit it, so, in other words, if you don't want to say it's permitted. Um.
You can change the state.
Prohib, right, you think it would be prohibited, but not with agricultural, unfortunately, they have a very strong lobbying group, right, in the Ohio General Assembly and, um. You know, they have, you know, Ohio is a very, very strong agricultural state and they have said, listen, townships have very limited power when it comes to agricultural uses and structures. Um, now again, it has to meet those definitions of agriculture. But we, we have very limited power, now, the, the point though, Heather, like you said, I mean, the safety and health, the health and welfare of the, of the community, doesn't really make sense to have agriculture. You know, next to industrial and commercial properties, probably not. But not everyone would necessarily agree with that, so.
Then forget my comment on R1.
I still agree. Eliminate it as a permitted use in R1.
But can we do that?
You just answered me, yes.
You certainly can, like I have definitely seen other local governments take, um, having a, a different approach than what I think Concord has done. Concord actually puts it as a permitted use, if I'm not mistaken, right? Instead, what they have done is not mention it.
Not mention it.
Um, now, that would normally mean, right, that it, that Latin expression I was talking about, that which is, right. But unfortunately, with agriculture, the Ohio General Assembly has trumped us here and they have said, you cannot prohibit. There's only very small things you can regulate on agriculture and here they are. So, I mean, does, does it, does it matter to say it's specifically permitted? Or would you rather just take it off completely and just leave it up to someone to ask? Now, and again, like unless we are actually regulating something that we are allowed to regulate in the Ohio Vice Code regarding agriculture. Technically, they don't have to come here for a permit, even though it's a permitted use. Really, truly, the zoning, town, the township has no power, so there's no zoning permit that gets issued for your agricultural use. Or your agricultural building, it's exempt technically from zoning. So there, I could see the reason why you would maybe just want to take it out. Do not specifically list it as a permitted use, because then someone might be thinking, I have to go into the township and get a permit. However, the back to the other side of that though is, it's great to have that, you know, that documentation. What are you using your building for that we are not able to regulate and they say it's agricultural use, that's helpful so that we know.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we're not issuing a permit for that building, so.
So we could just, what we could do is to remove the, the agricultural use terms. From R1 without prohibiting it. Just remove the word, the term agricultural use.
As a permitted use.
As a permitted use.
You can.
But it's still a permitted use, but we're just not saying it's a permitted.
Correct.
So then people have to kind of make that jump in logic to say, hey, I can do this, because there's nothing they can do to stop me, but.
I agree with her. Stick by your first proposal. Do we rather ask, ask for forgiveness as opposed to asking for permission? So if we take it out, we're asking for forgiveness if we ever get caught. By the state. You know?
We're not getting caught.
Nope.
It's just.
We're not getting, I'm, take it out. I mean. And, and, and I've got, well, no offense, but I've got. Only one, two, three, four, five, five Ps for agricultural use in that whole row.
All right, which, what are they?
Go with the uses.
R3, R4, R6, R8 and AP.
And everything else we should eliminate?
Yeah, well, M. Manufacturing. Why do we have agricultural in a manufacturing zoning place? THC, well, I think we're gonna eliminate THC, aren't we, all together? So take that one out, S, what is S?
Special interchange.
Okay. RD2, research and development. No, you're not gonna do, you're just not gonna do them there. Let, let, let's, let's see if we can put in some logic. Into this chart, it's a beautiful chart, it's a beautiful chart, I love it.
It is.
But I think it needs some logic to it, with the, with the Ps and the Cs.
So then it's your, it's your, it's your position on the agricultural use to eliminate. Permitted use in R1, right?
Yes.
Um, B1.
Yes.
B2.
Yes.
BX.
Yes.
C.
Yes.
GB.
Yes.
GH.
Yes.
M.
Yes.
RD2, S.
And three CPO. No, I'm sorry.
R2D2.
Why are we keeping it in the airport?
Right.
District.
Where's the airport?
AP.
AP.
Oh, AP, I don't know.
It's just residential, the large lot residential.
Okay, we can take out AP also.
All right.
That's okay by me, yeah.
Can, can I mention, Mr. Chairman, the, the R3 district, that's our multifamily residential district, so probably wouldn't be appropriate. They don't even really have lots, usually those are condominium developments, so they probably would never really meet the criteria in order to have an agricultural use.
One more, one more bites the bullet.
So then, and instead of being a P across the board, uh, what we are looking at now is a P under R4, a P under R6, and a P under R8.
Yep.
And everything else should be dropped. Any comments, Frank?
No, Mr. Chairman, makes sense.
Okay, Rich?
I'm on board.
You're on board?
And, and just as a reminder, this chart does not exist in the zoning resolution.
Right, right.
So I put this together as a way that we could look at all the uses based on combining them. So where we actually indicate the agricultural uses is in section 601B. So, um, I can take the feedback from you guys and figure out what we'd have to do to revise the text that's in there.
Right.
And work with legal.
So we're in, we're in agreement, I like where this is going, by the way, I like, I like the way this is going. So then, so then what you're saying is then to only allow or have the P in R4, R6, and R8? Correct?
Yes, yes.
And Heather, you can, you can work with that?
I understand what your intent is, yes, I can work with that.
All right, I'm good with that, so let's, let's work on, let's work on that and allow the, just permitted for, um, the R4, R6, and R8, and scrap it from everything else. Although we're not technically prohibiting it, we're just eliminating the, from that, the term out of that.
Right.
So if somebody wanted to do agricultural, they really could, but they would have to.
They gotta get past Heather.
Right.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little confused then, so you don't want to limit ag uses to just these three districts?
Well, but my question, that goes back to, to.
Cause I mean, if we're silent, okay, so if we take agri, we do not put anything in the zoning resolution that regulates agricultural uses, that how we are allowed to per the ORC. And that means we're not regulating it, which basically means they can do whatever they want. Um, so we can't be silent, if you still want to regulate ag, you have to put it in the zoning, how you want, where you want to allow it to happen, and what the rules are. And the way we have it written now is that you can do it anywhere in the township, in any of the districts.
Yes.
But based on the lot size and the location of that, you can only do certain agricultural uses. So if you're located in an area in a platted subdivision, or in an area with 15 or more lots that were approved under 711, 131, 133, which is codes that the county planning commission approves the lot splits. Then our rules kick in, and then we have the ability to regulate agricultural uses. For example, if you have a lot less than one acre in size, you can only do nursery, stock, fruits, vegetables for your own private, you know, consumption, with maybe some little sales. But then when you get over that one acres and, and up, you can have horses and cows and all that kind of animal husbandry and, um. But again, I guess, I maybe we need, I clarify again with Bridie, like could we limit that to only certain districts that are in an area where we can regulate? It still has to be within the 15.
But you do that, I'm sorry, you do that already, we do that already. We say at one acre a lot, we.
Right, but it's in any district, and what you guys are talking about is can we limit it to only certain districts?
Oh, 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 right.
And that's. That's where I'm a little confused, can we limit it to only certain districts that meet that criteria?
No.
No, okay, so we have to allow that.
I was thinking that this list, right, that you prepared was actually in one of the sections.
Oh, no.
And it's not, it's just, right, so technically, we don't have a provision that actually says agricultural use is a permitted use in the R1 district.
Right.
We don't have a section that says agricultural use is a permitted use in the commercial district. What we have is just the 6.01, um, excuse me, yes, 6.01B section of the, that literally mirrors and mimics the Ohio Revised Code.
So I guess to Hiram's point, like we're not drawing attention that, hey, property owners, you can do this in all these districts. They almost still have to come and call and ask and say, hey, are we allowed to do this? And then at that point, we scrutinize where are they located, can we regulate it, and then let them know.
And I think that's the way it should be.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
Right.
So maybe, maybe we.
So you need to figure out a way to, to massage 6.01B, right? That would be the way to do this.
No, I, I think what we're saying is we don't do, we do nothing then.
Right, okay, all right.
Okay, so, so help, help us with this table again, Heather, maybe, maybe this where I'm.
Okay.
I misunderstood when I was studying this the last couple of weeks, so this is not in the resolu, these are not in the resolutions.
These uses are allowed. The Ps and Cs and the blanks are exactly what are in the zoning resolution. I combined the commercial, table 2204 from the commercial district and the residential table. So you could look at all the different districts side by side when looking at the uses that we allowed in the township as a whole. So when you see the Ps and Cs, these are actually allowed if you go to those sections. I've not made any changes, but the table itself does not exist in this way in the zoning resolution.
This table is a tool.
Yeah, yeah, I explained that, or I'm sorry, I explained that at the first meeting when we first started talking about this last month. Maybe that's more confusing.
No, I like this table, I, I would, I would like to see this, just as it is, go into our zoning book. Cause this is a quick thing you can look at very quickly and see if it's permitted or not permitted in all these districts.
And I've seen other communities do something like this.
Yes, I like it, I love it, you did a nice job, thank you.
It would take a lot of work, but like if we ever wanted to completely change how we do our list of uses in all the districts, we could maybe at some point get to this. I mean, this is a lot to do, it's easy for a work session to throw this together, but maybe a lot of little nuances that we'd have to change in the zoning resolution if we wanted to do this.
But once it's adopted in the formats like this, it's very easy to go back in the future.
Yes.
And make a quick, okay.
Yep.
It's out.
Yeah.
Without going to a massive thing that could take months of meetings and the work sessions and stuff.
Right.
That's my thought.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So I guess maybe, maybe my thought, you know, and maybe we need to retool the way we're approaching this. We want to just go right from the top of the list and work across, and then, and then just kind of go down the list instead of going by district across?
Yes.
Instead of, yeah, instead of going column wise, maybe go row wise?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go, so, okay, so agricultural use, we know what we want to do, right? We're good with that?
Yes.
And I did have some recommendations initially in my staff, in my memo to you guys on things that I thought that you might want to look at. And I know, Hiram had mentioned, we kind of went through all these conditional uses not that long ago. So I really not anticipating a lot of changes in what's going on in the commercial districts, cause I thought we did a fairly decent job of looking at that. But there definitely were some things that I had tried to bring to your attention about, and I know we talked a little bit last month about taking the adult group homes out of the B1, B2. I had a note on that in here, that that was something that you guys were, that you were considering doing. Um, and then I had, we had a lengthy conversation about some of these other uses that might fall under personal services, um, or other retail shops. What did we determine on that? I think we were just okay with letting those fall under those definitions and not necessarily needing to regulate them as separate uses. Was there closure on that? Am I wrong on that? Okay, um.
All right, so adult, so let's look at adult family home then, let's start at the top of the adult family home, we have it as a permitted use in all of the R districts. Uh, 12, 13, 4, 6, 8, and, 13, 4, 6, and 8. Any comments on, should we, should we eliminate that from any of these districts?
I think we have to keep that, um, because they function as a household, like a family, um, I.
So being a permitted use in those, this.
We are not able to just not allow that.
Okay, all right. What about adult group home? It's a, right now, it's a conditional use in R1, and a conditional use in R4, and a conditional use in B1 and B2. So the, the issue we have here is the B1, B2, we don't think that's appropriate.
There was some discussion about whether or not we should be utilizing commercial property from a residential type nature.
Yep, I agree, so I would like to, I think we should drop the conditional from B1 and B2. Any, any comments?
I agree with that.
Agree.
Agree, Frank, you okay with that? All right, so let's drop, uh, let's drop the conditional use out of B1 and B2, and just leave it in the, as a conditional in R1 and R4.
But I have a question though, are the group home by definition is quite a few people?
Six to 16.
Yes, in an R1, is that appropriate?
I don't think so.
Even as a conditional use?
Even as a conditional, I, I took the C out of R1, I, yeah, I took the C out of R1.
That's what I'm suggesting.
And there are provisions that have in 1316, um, under the CUP that I believe would necessitate a larger lot, so I don't, you're not going to be allowed to do that, Rich, on like a half acre lot.
So we should, we should take it out anyway, so it avoids confusion.
Well, you, you're, you're right, but you're probably gonna get a conditional use that goes to BZA that says, oh, I don't have. I, I only have an eight, a half acre, can I do this? And then, and then they're gonna say yes, and that blows the whole thing.
Oh, it's only one acre.
It's one acre.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever.
Adult group home should be located in a lot of least one acre, it's just just over by the R1.
Well, we could consider, if you thought it was appropriate for the district, if you didn't like the lot size, maybe you bump up the minimum lot size, or go with your idea.
I'd like to see it eliminated as a conditional use.
I say take, uh, take the C out of R1 for adult group home.
Okay, and leave, but leave it in R4?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So is, as a residential district, an adult group home, is it not a fee-based service? Is it, is it not a business?
Ooh, that's a good question, I don't know.
I, what I, I was reading, catching up on the minutes, and that's the first thing that hit me, it's residential, but it's, it's, it's a business. That's how I, my mind works, cause it's fee, it's for fee.
Yeah, I would say it is.
So we were, we were removing it from B1, B2, but I thought that's where it actually belongs?
But then, like Heather said though, then you start mixing residential use in, in the B1 and B2.
But it's a business. A group home, is it, is it? Bridie, is it, am I?
I mean.
Defining a group home as a business, for profit?
There's arguments for both, right, like that does make sense.
So there was, um, like, there's group homes that are run by nonprofits as well, that that would fall under? I don't know if that matters to you.
Well, then.
No, cause they still make money, nonprofits make a good amount of money, they just don't call it profit.
Gotcha.
But then if you're gonna have as many as 16, you said?
Yeah, six to 16.
Can you picture a half acre lot with a home that fit on a half acre lot, and have 16 cars parked in the driveway?
Well, no, we already agreed to move that out of R1.
Right.
Frank, I was, I was questioning, is it R4, even as it, is it a residential?
Oh, oh, okay.
District altogether, since it's a fee-based service, operating as a business.
Yeah.
Maybe that, I just have that as a question, Heather, I don't know.
Well, then where would we put it?
B, commercial.
But then you're mixing, you're mixing residential, living and commercial.
Yeah, I, I guess I put greater weight to the fact that that's a business than residential, it's caring for some people.
But.
Like a nursing home.
Like a hospital.
Well, I mean, you know, I have a friend that's in an, in an adult home, not here in Ohio, uh, uh, in, in a different state. But he's a, he's a vet, okay, suffering from PTSD, and, uh, they have an adult home, and he lives, he's able to find me, he's perfectly functional, does, you know. But he, he lives in this house where they basically have other adults that, uh, you know, they, they, they cook his, they cook meals, they have activities, you know, they do things, and they have, they're, they, they all have to work and do, you know, there's, there's functionality involved there. Um, you know, so I see the, I see the value of something like that. The question, and I get your, it's a business, okay? Yeah, because there's somebody that goes in there and cooks for these guys every day, and, you know, and it's the meals and things, I'm sure there's, I'm sure they pay to live in that home. But, you know, does that make it a business that fits in a business district? That's where I, because now you've got a bunch of people that are living in a, in a, in an adult home, and they're in a, 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 a commercial business instead of being around other people. And that, doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose of, you know what I'm saying?
Cause so many of them have to, because of their condition, should be in more quiet environment.
Right, and now you're gonna stick them in a commercial district.
Yeah, they're like warehouse.
Pizza Roto and the, and the, you know, pet food store.
Yeah.
And that's where they got to stay, I don't know that that's a great idea necessarily.
This could go in that 3,000 square foot garage on Proudly Road. I'm just saying, right, next to that guy's house, 15 people, whatever, I don't know, it's.
But they're living.
So then, so, well, then what's, then let me ask this, let's take that to the next, what's the, what's in the definition that says six to 16? Could we change that, is that, is that six to 16 associated with something, or is that what we came up with? And could we, could we adjust that number down from 16 and make it a, a, a lower number?
No, I think these are tied to how they're, they get their regulations and license from the state.
Same as the adult family home, cause they were adopted in 2015, the same day. Adult family home is three to five unrelated adults.
Right. But, you know, three to five is, that, that's a good number, you know, I think. But then six, this, but when you get to 16, that's a, that's a, that's a big number, it really is. Like Frank said, you know, put a, a resident, think of a regular residence in a, in a residential district with 16 people, you know, with, with potentially 16 cars or, you know.
Yeah, cause so many of these people, for one thing, are, most of them have some type of emotional issues.
Sure, sure.
You know, and you want to, don't want to put them in an environment that's, you know, I see being loud and stuff and commercial, and that just adds to unfortunately their, their condition. My, you know, you like to be in a nice peaceful setting, you don't get that in the business district.
Well, and there are currently two different businesses districts, the B1 and the B2, which are very different.
Yes. Oh, I know they're, I know they're different.
Good point.
You.
One's retail.
Yeah, B1 is more retail, that, that's more Cryle Road, um.
Right.
And by Red Hawk, um, all over there, and then you have the B2, which is just south of here, which is a little bit more of a mix of uses, because we have a lot of non-conforming, you know, older homes that are sited on B2 properties. Some of the, well, we have the, the group home, um, right next to Accurate Landscape, that Lake Jagger Recovery operates, so there's one there. I mean, from the street, it appears to be residential, those kind of things, but still kind of fits into that commercial area. So, maybe it, maybe it's still appropriate in the commercial districts, maybe one versus the other.
Maybe in B2.
B2.
Maybe more in B2 than B1?
Yeah, yeah, sounds like it, sounds like it. Is there any reason why we can't keep it in R4 and B2?
No.
Not at all, and you could look at if you were, you know, you could dive into some of the conditions that are related to those districts too, to see if we need to maybe make some changes.
Need what?
Like increasing lot sizes or setbacks or something like that.
So I said.
Mine's in pencil.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm okay, I guess, I, and I, and Rich, I, I do get your, 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 you know, I do get your B, I do get your business point. So may, so do we, so do we allow it in, do we have it as a conditional in R4 and in B2? Would you, is that okay?
I like that.
Does that help you, or do you want it out of residential completely?
I, yeah, I, R4 is an acre, it's not much bigger than R1, it's an acre.
Well, and the condition is they have to have two acres minimum in the R4, if they want to do adult group home. So maybe bump that up to five acres, 1316, under the, under the specific conditions. On page 13. On page thirteen point one four.
Two acres.
You okay with that?
Two acres, sixteen. I guess, keeps it in smaller lots. And also permits it in B2.
So you're, you're good with the R4 as long as it's in the two acre, with the two acre requirements?
The weight's written now.
Mm-hmm.
Without, without B1.
Okay. Alright, so that's, so we'll leave it in the R4 with the two acre minimum, and we'll, we'll include it in the B2. And eliminate it from R1 and-
And that's a C in B2?
That's still a conditional use.
That's, that's a C in B2.
It's a, it's a C, no matter where it's at, it's a C. It's gonna be a conditional.
Right, right, okay. Okay.
Okay, we talked about agricultural use. We, we basically narrowed that down to just the R4, R6, and R8, right?
R6, R8, yep.
Because I circled some, and that's why I said I need a pencil, so I can erase some of my Xs and make them circles. Alright, so, so the permitted for agricultural use are gonna remain in R4, R6, and R8?
Right.
Okay. Uh, dwelling detached single family, it's a permitted use in R1, R4, R6, and R8. We okay with that? Good?
Good here?
Yes.
Frank?
Fine.
Okay, so we're gonna leave that as, as it is? Okay? Alright, dwelling single family cluster in R3, which is obviously where it belongs and nowhere else.
Mm-hmm.
Any issues with that? Want to add it anywhere than what it is already?
No.
Okay, so we're good with the R3. Okay, so we're gonna leave that alone. Uh, dwelling two-family, permitted in R1 and R4. You okay with that?
Good.
Two-family on a, on an R1?
Yeah.
Two-family, R1?
Yeah. I think so.
Two-family dwelling in one, two families in one dwelling.
Well, so, yeah, two, dwelling two-family, right. In an R1? I mean, that's, are you okay with that?
That's when you have a duplex.
Yeah, it's a duplex.
It's a duplex.
Right.
It is?
Yes.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Is a duplex allowed? Did we say duplex?
Yes.
Do we have any?
Yeah, there were some recently constructed just on Concord Hampton west of here, on both sides, north and south. We've allowed two families slash duplexes probably since we first-
Yeah.
Adopted zoning. I've seen it in there for years.
Yeah.
But, yes, in R1 and R4.
Yeah.
But they don't, they can't do it on the same minimum half acre lot.
Right.
The twenty-two thousand square feet. You have to have, in order to do the two-family, you have to have one acre in the R1 and two acres. So there's no actual density bonus. You're not getting anything.
Okay, so then, you've answered, that was why my head was spinning back.
Right, okay, so we're good with, we're good with the two-family as a permitted use in R1 and R4?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, multi-family in R3, which would fit, obviously, just like the, uh, cluster.
Right.
Okay, so we're good with that. Nothing else, it's nowhere else on the zoning tech for that.
Moving right along.
Yeah.
Okay, we just cooked off all that. Now we're moving to, now, now the fun begins. Now we're moving into commercial and office uses. Okay, uh, administrative business and professional offices, and those are all permitted from B1 all the way through Town Hall Center, except for S, Special Interchange. All permitted uses, administrative business and professional offices. B1, B2, BX, C?
Yep.
GB?
Yep.
GH? M?
And manufacturing, well, that, wouldn't that, well?
Sure.
Are they compatible? Yeah, I guess they're compatible.
Okay, so we're good with, we're good with the permitted uses that are stipulated?
Yes. Across, across the board, right?
Except for T H, THC. Right, THC's gone, did we?
Aren't we gonna get rid of THC, basically?
We've not had any conversations about Town Hall Commons. We no longer have the Town Hall Neighborhood District.
Oh.
All of those properties have been affected.
THN.
Yeah.
THN, okay. I knew that, Ira, you just weren't there.
Is that right?
I just seen it, man. You caught me.
And maybe at this point, I should state, maybe we, as far as like special district and airport districts, we might wanna look at those little detail at a later date, especially since we're kind of waiting to hear back from the Quail Hollow, uh, study, and I think we have to have a whole separate work session on this airport district.
Yeah, Connie's not involved anymore, is she?
Just because we have only a, a small area that's zoned airport, and there's a lot of things that go into that district that, if we, if that district was eliminated, that would affect, um, the, the SOBs that we only permit in that district, so we would have to at that time figure out where they could go. And that's not something I think that we wanna take on at this moment, we're just trying to quickly, you know, get on that.
So Eric, so then now we move to aircraft hangars and tiny houses, speaking of airport district.
And aircraft, and next four.
The next four.
Yep, aircraft-related wholesale and retail, aircraft sales and service, and aircraft training and instruction are all permitted uses in the airport district. We okay with that?
Sounds perfectly logical to me.
Okay.
So all four of those categories are, okay.
Right.
Okay.
And they're not, they are not permitted or conditional anywhere else in the, in the zoning resolution?
No.
Not at all.
Um, automotive repair, or automotive, I'm sorry, automotive rental.
Rental.
Uh, right now, it's only permitted in BX.
Our airport doesn't have any rental companies, does it? I didn't think so.
Hurts budget, not coming soon?
I don't think so.
Well, I, okay, I, now, you know, I mean, it's, right now, it's, it's in BX. Why not in B1? Automotive rental? Or B2? Why not B1 or B2, or both B1 and B2?
I think because of the way it's defined.
Okay.
Twenty-two, Heather?
Illuminate us.
Okay. B2 is specific to, sorry, you asked B1. B1 is specific to the rental goods and personal services that serve the residents around Key Road intersections, as opposed to BX, right? But car rental convenience, retail goods, and personal services is residential retail, B1.
Well, I mean, take, for example, you go down Menor Avenue, go down to Menor Avenue, and there's a, there's that Enterprise car rental place that's on Menor Avenue that, other than it's a parking lot full of cars. But I mean, you go in, you rent a car, you get in your car, and go use it. You know, I, I've used that Enterprise service when I've had car repair done.
So why?
So why, 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 why limit that only to BX? Why, why, what's wrong with automotive rental? Dude, does anybody know anything adverse that comes along with car, automotive rental? That would, that it wouldn't fit in a B1 or B2?
Bunch of cars parked in the lot.
Right.
But not, not like a car dealer.
Right.
I mean, they, they might have fifteen cars, they might have twelve, or ten, because they get them in and out.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're cycling them around.
So. It's all relative to the size of the building and the parking area. Like the one on Menor Avenue, only has a few cars.
But you're permitting it in BX?
BX.
Yeah.
So why not B1 or B2, or both B1 and B2?
And I don't know if they would have a garage to service them either.
Yeah.
A lot of places don't.
Don't.
No.
They're offsite.
It's just strictly rental.
Yeah. Yeah, I see, I'm, B1, B2, BX. I think that'll work.
Heather, any comment?
Well, I was just kind of going back at the district per, purpose statements as well, just trying to tie, you know, what the purpose of those various zoning districts are, to help make a better decision as to why one use might be allowed in one district versus the other. And we have a lot of commercial districts.
We do.
Where I feel like-
We do.
Um, it's hard to make a distinction of, you know, why one thing might not be allowed in the other. And I guess I would just, um, as we're going through this, think about, you know, like, so the automotive rental-
Yeah, GB is a gateway business.
It only seems to make sense, because it fits in where people of, of those particular businesses would rent a car. You know, if they're in town for a business meeting overnight or something, they'll pick up a car, use it for the evening, the meeting next morning, they'll just drop it off and go on to their back home later. So that, to me, I'd say makes sense.
The only, the only issue, the, the only issue that I see with car rental is the fact that they need a parking lot of reasonable size to keep their car, to keep their inventory.
Yeah.
But aside from that-
Yeah.
I mean, there's really not much, it's, it's, I consider it a pretty unobtrusive use. You know, it's not something that's gonna, you know, cause a lot of issues.
Heather, were you going to the, I mean, there, outside of Gateway Health, which we understand, along Auburn Road, there are four business districts. Are you going to, like, why do we have four? Right?
Well, yeah, I mean-
Yeah.
Looking at the zoning map, you know, BX, B1, B2, well, which, like, okay, so if you look at Cryle Road, as you drive down Cryle Road, you have no clue that there's three different zoning districts.
No.
Right? I mean, like, really, like, what gets built there and gets developed, it, it seems like they, those districts along Cryle Road should allow pretty much the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
And over here, like on Ravenna, where the, where the B2 is, like, that is, you know, abutting more residential uses or land areas, so that district, I feel like, needs to be a little bit like, taken into consideration the residential nature. And scrutinizing those uses to make sure that we're not allowing something that's gonna be disruptive.
So what do we wanna do with automotive rental?
I would say I would not be in favor of allowing it over in the B2, just because I-
In where?
Over in the B2.
In B2?
Yeah, south of here, Town Hall, can you, like, I just can't see that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't even see anyone maybe making that as a business.
But you're okay with B1? What about GB?
Gateway Business? Um, I feel like I wanna look at the, that's kind of more like in our medical kind of corridor with the hospital and everything. I, I really, in Auburn Road, I don't feel like that's appropriate in, in Gateway Business, down by like where the school is, and where the roundabout, and abutting the Capital District, and-
So B1 and BX?
Now think about also B1, you, yeah, I do, um, okay.
Yeah.
It's interesting, because we, and then we have the Ravenna-Grover intersection. And it's kind of like the, you know, in the Concord Plaza and all that other stuff too, but, um, you know. I mean, if you, if you, I guess if you wanted to make that available to another district, B1 would probably be the most appropriate.
Or do we just leave it in, in BX and call it a day?
BX is, we have, it's only limit, BX is limited to right here. I mean, not right here, I mean, at the interchange.
BX?
BX, BX is limited to the ninety forty-four.
No, BX is-
Am I reading that right? Southeast, southeast corner?
No, that, that, that's red, that's B1. That's what you're seeing there, next to the special district, that's B1. BX is south of Grissmo, like Lucky's and Panini's and that's Gold Court. And the colors.
Isn't that B1?
No, Gold Court, that's, that's BX.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Where's Gold Court?
Ira, look at B1 and tell me, you can distinguish the color difference between B1 and BX.
No, I, I don't.
This is B1 here, and then this, this is BX, and this is-
Put polka dots in there or something.
Wow.
Okay. B1 is where?
It's hard to, it's hard to tell you what's in-
You just got trained.
Well, ah, it divides the red, where it's red.
It's in the middle. The, the middle red is B1.
And then below the red, the other red, BX. They're both with red.
I can see the difference, but I can see why, you know.
You ought to put polka dots.
You're struggling there. Because I look at this thing every day.
Is that Business Interchange? Cross that. Is that BX down here?
Yes, there's also BX where, like, Concord Motorsports, Cryle Road Hardware, Betta Forty-four Lumber, um, that's all BX right there, just south of Hunting Lake. And then just north, uh, where, kind of where Gold Court is and, um, Crowd Crossing, that is all.
So that's all appropriate for the rental. I like, I like where it's at.
So no, no B1, just leave it where it's at and forget any others adding it anywhere else? Is that what your thought?
Somebody did it right the first time.
Well, hey, every once in a while, we get one. Alright, so we'll-
You're the blind squirrel.
Alright, so we'll, we'll just keep automotive rental as a permitted use in BX.
Okay.
Automotive repair. And that is permitted for B2, BX, and RD2.
Oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
My finger failed me. B2, BX, and RD2.
Mm-hmm.
And my, my comment here is, why not B1?
Similar to Heather's point about B, it's in B2, no, I'm sorry. Automotive rental. I'm sorry, which one are we at? Repair?
We're on repair now.
Oh, okay. It's conditional use in B1.
Automotive repair is permitted in B2, BX, and RD2. It's not conditional anywhere else, it's just permitted in three districts.
So B2 is against the residential area, it's, it's right here?
Yes.
Right.
That-
Backs up to the bike path.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, so we were thinking that wasn't appropriate for rental, but it's okay for repair?
Yeah, Concord Collision.
Mm-hmm. It's right here.
Yeah, it's your repair.
Yeah.
But now, why not B1?
I think this goes back to the district statement. What's the purpose of the B1 district? It's to provide an area with retail goods, personal services, those kind of uses.
I don't wanna get my tires changed.
Well, that would fall under the automotive services.
Mm-hmm.
Automotive repair is more of like a collision center.
Okay, 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 okay.
I'm okay with the automotive repair being where it's at.
Okay. Agreed.
So we don't have it in B1. I'll take that one out.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, moving on.
Alright.
We'll never get done.
Autom, now, it's nine o'clock, so we are getting, we are getting along of tooth here. So let's do, let's do automotive services, and we'll call it a night for this work session. What do you think?
Get out of the car thing.
Yeah, get through the automotive part. Okay, so automotive services, including instant oil changes, is conditional in B1, uh, and permitted in BX and conditional in GB.
Gateway Business.
Mm-hmm. Gateway Business, uh, Business Interchange, and, uh, B1. It's conditional in B1.
So what might the, and realize, we wanna get rid of- So what might the, and realize, we want to get rid of conditionals, don't we?
Well, we want to, we want to consider where we're putting conditional.
Okay.
As a result of, if it's conditional, then basically if they get, if they, BZA approves it, it's.
It's, it's a done deal.
It's a done deal.
Right.
So if they meet the conditions, they can do it.
Okay, so what are the conditions for?
For B1? For the automotive services, what are the conditions?
Services, oh, there it is, there's that C, what are the conditions for B1?
Are they conditions for B1, or are they conditions for automotive services?
Automotive services are conditional use in B1.
Right, so here are the conditions, all work has to be performed entirely within an enclosed building, all storage of supplies, parts, and merchandise shall be within an enclosed building except as provided elsewhere. The parking of employee vehicles and vehicles waiting to be serviced or returned to the customers following service shall be parked in areas indicating, you know, indicated for such parking on the approved site plan. Any off-street parking areas have to be provided in accordance with section, what is that, twenty-nine of the resolution, and then waiting spaces have to be provided in accordance with, I believe, section twenty-nine point oh-nine of the resolution. And automotive services does include instant oil changes.
Right.
So those are the four, I guess, four conditions, if you will. Is that right, Heather, or are there more?
No, that's it, as far as the specific conditions.
Specific, right.
Then there's the general. The general criteria in thirteen point five.
So we don't have junkers sitting alongside the road.
So my, I guess if I was going to scrutinize that, I would, I'd be wondering why, why is it permitted in BX and conditional in B1 and GB, like, why is it P versus C, like, if that use has potential to have negative impacts, like, it should either, all of them should be conditional, in my opinion, or.
I like, I like, I like, I like it being conditional because it gives us a little bit of control versus permitted.
I guess I would maybe question the gateway business.
Yeah, so we, so I would say, I would recommend, I would recommend that we change the BX from permitted to conditional.
To C.
Yeah, change it from P to C.
All three of them, right?
Yeah. So then all three would be conditional, and I, and I think the conditions are good.
Yeah, because then they'd be voted on, on their merits.
Right.
Where it's, it should be in an appropriate location.
Right.
And that was BX, Business Exchange. Okay, all right.
But look at the gateway business, though, gateway business is GB, Auburn, the hospital. That area.
Community center.
GP is permitted.
Medical.
Automotive services.
Yeah.
Seems like it doesn't belong on the west side of forty-four.
But then the people that are working in those areas liked you, what you just explained, they would have this kind of service performed while they're working, it's, they're working during the day, they can drop their car off, get the oil changed and stuff.
You drop your car off on Cryle.
And walk? No, I'm just saying, might make it more, more convenient in that type of, you know, working environment.
So you want to drop the conditional out of the gateway business?
It's, I'm suggesting, only because it's, the district there is concentrated on medical, community center, it doesn't seem to be, seems to seem to be a fit. Off of Auburn. Heather? You don't know?
Well, no, I mean, I.
It's just an opinion, yeah.
Oh, I kind of was citing, I was kind of, I felt the same way that you did, but I guess whatever the board wants to do, we can propose maybe conditional or eliminate it.
So you, so you're, you're positioned, Rich, to drop it from.
From GB.
From GB. You okay with that, Frank?
I voice in my opinion, but, yeah.
Ira?
I can see it going down to the, further south on forty-four.
Near Auburn, Chris Center.
Which is where?
Right.
Which is red, right here? No, it goes on both sides, no, no, forty-four, no, wait, that's forty-four, they're over here on Auburn.
Yes.
Are they purple?
Yeah, they're purple, the other side of the street is where.
Okay. Well, no, I'm okay, I'm okay.
All right, so let's drop it as a conditional from GB.
And that is what, automotive services?
Yes.
Drop it from GB.
Yeah, we'll eliminate that as a conditional use, so it's only going to be a conditional use in B1 and BX.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And with that.
Stop here.
We're gonna call it a stop, but I think we made significant headway.
Fifteen uses tonight, let's check. I did the count.
We made significant progress.
And maybe for next month, we can just try to just take a look at what's remaining on this first page, and then maybe it might be a little faster to just kind of go, does anyone have any changes for B, for finances, does anyone have any changes for Ben Brakes, and kind of go through them quickly, I don't, I don't know if we can do that, just to try to help, yeah.
Right. Well, this is a big undertaking.
It is, and this is, this is. News for all get out.
I agree.
There, there was some discussion about the accessory building and the sizes and the relationship to that, is that anything that you wanted me to put on separate on the agenda as another separate little outside of this?
Say that again, please?
On what the resident had come and spoke about this same day.
Oh, yes, yes.
Do we want to maybe put that on as a separate work session, so we can separate it from kind of this kind of work, if that was something?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea, let's add that, let's add that to a.
Agreed.
Let's add that as another issue on work session.
And then maybe I could tie in some of that.
I was just gonna say, if you do a little bit of research and do a little bit of.
And I can talk to Brady too.
Yeah. Whether we, whether we, whether it's a, an arbitrary number, I think that's important too, whether we assign, just assign an arbitrary number, or do we make it tied in some way to the primary structure?
Or possibly an amendment to a definition that might help us as well.
Right, so what, will you do some, do a little bit of legwork on that for us so we can have some meaningful discussions at the next session?
Okay.
Great.
All right. Yep, good meeting, guys, we did a lot of work tonight and got a lot accomplished.
And our next meeting is June.
Yes, and our next meeting is June fourth, twenty twenty-four. And at this point, we know what we're gonna have in front of us, and any new stuff, obviously, it'll be on the agenda, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.